Good afternoon. Welcome to City Council Meeting for April 12th, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, could we have the confirmation of the agenda posting and roll call, please?
Yes, the agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and all members except Councilmember Matt Fox is absent today.
All right. Thank you. We'll begin with the invocation. Is Reverend Adam Stetson available? Thank you, Reverend. Please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, King of kings from whom all rank and power proceed, who instituted temporal authority and committed to it the sword for the punishment of the wicked and the protection of the good, lead all temporal lords and rulers in your way that they may keep the common peace, turn away from us war and sedition, nurture whatever makes for peace, honor, and justice. To that end, O Lord of hosts, give them your divine blessing, the righteousness of Moses, the meekness of David, the zeal of Phineas, the strength of Samson, and the wisdom of Solomon. Make and keep them steadfast in good, courageous in adversity, confident in affliction, joyful in sorrow, reliable in distress, victorious in temptation, unmoved in prosperity, and wise, strong, and prosperous in all their endeavors. Lead their government, let their government serve for the suppression of all tyrants, peace in this present time, and the protection of your people. To the praise and eternal worship of your holy name through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Will I have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you, Reverend Stetson, for your words this evening. We'll have our initial public comment period. Public comment during this period is restricted to items that are on the agenda for action. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak. And as always, we ask you be civil and concise in your comments. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak in the initial public comment period? Please come forward. State your name, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Bob Sweetin. I represent Rev. Newables. They've asked me to be here tonight. They're working on the Delamar Project out in the El Dorado Valley. Tonight, on your consent agenda, actually, you're considering an item related to a UNLV lease. As this council and the mayor may remember, last year, Rev. Newables went through the land management process on this parcel. We're going to intend to move forward on it. They have a very exciting development, solar development plan there. We've been working with your wonderful city attorney, spoke with your city manager earlier this evening, and we're really excited to be moving on it. So look forward to working with you all on that. The company asked me to be here tonight to show our interest and touch base. So thank you for the work you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the initial public comment period? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is the initial public comment period for City Council Meeting. Again, anyone wishing to speak during the initial public comment period? Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the initial public comment?
None were received.
Hearing no others, then, we will close the initial public comment period and move to the approval of the agenda. Any changes for the agenda, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, I'd like you to consider removing item number eight.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
No further changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion with the removal of item number nine?
Eight.
Eight, excuse me.
I move to accept the agenda, removing item number eight.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then approval of the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
And Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Councilmembers, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We will begin then with item number six. This is a recognition and presentation of certificates to two of our high school students for their 3A state championship efforts. Mr. Erby Brownson and Mr. Moore, could you come forward, please? Well, first off, congratulations, gentlemen. Mr. Hunter Moore, you finished the season 47 and three with your record, wrestling at the 160-pound division. You also was only one of 16 wrestlers across all weight class and all divisions in Southern Nevada, turned to earn second-team All-Southern Nevada recognition. In addition to your wrestling prowess, you are a scholar athlete with a 4.42 weighted average. Congratulations. And for Tyson Erby Brownson, you finished 48 and two on the season at the 195 class. You also were one of only 16 wrestlers across all weight classes and all divisions in Southern Nevada to earn first-team All-Southern Nevada recognition. And you have a weighted average of 4.29. So again, congratulations to both of you on not only winning state championships, but doing very well. So I have certificates here for you. There you go. There you go. Would you all like to say something? You can say something.
Thank everybody in this town for all their support. Everywhere I go, after the state championship, everybody was congratulating me, and that was probably the coolest part of winning the state championship. But it was just pretty cool. Everybody knew me.
Oh, don't be shy now. You're a state champion. Okay. Again, outstanding, both out there on the wrestling mat and in the classroom. You know, we like to promote what we see from our high school as far as the state championships. One of these days, we're going to get a sign out there that commemorates that. But again, congratulations and great work. I think both have at least one more year. You're a junior, is that correct? Both juniors? Well, good luck for next year, and again, congratulations on this year. Thank you.
Congratulations.
school students, standouts here in the state of Nevada. Again, congratulations, gentlemen.
All right. Item number seven, presentation and update of the February 2022 strategic plan implementation. Mr. Tetter?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Every quarter, we update you and the community on the city's strategic plan and its implementation plan. As a reminder, the plan is a roadmap for staff to improve processes and ensure that we're providing the best service to the community. In 2018, the city hired Management Partners, an organization with more than 25 years in government consulting, to create the strategic plan. The city issued two surveys, one for residents and one for employees. Staff engaged with the public in four workshops. Two council workshops were also held to develop the strategic plan, and one staff workshop set forth the strategies to meet the goals. So I'm happy to report that we're currently 70% to achieving the five goals, which include achieving prudent financial stewardship, which includes 10 strategies, invest in infrastructure, which includes five strategies, manage growth and development, which includes 11 strategies, promoting historic preservation with eight strategies, and sustain a high level of public safety services with seven strategies. While there are many strategies that have been achieved to date, many of them are ongoing, continuing strategies to keep us moving forward. Let's look at the first goal, achieve prudent financial stewardship. Strategy two, diversify revenue sources through greater use of grants, self-sustaining leases, and funds. Negotiations continue on the sale of Track 350, and the money collected from the final sale of this property will help fund the new community pool. And strategy eight, communicate and share financial successes with the community. We've worked to put out news releases, news flashes, and social media on the Watersmart grant, winning two Government Finance Officers Association awards for annual financial reporting and the annual budget process. And the average organic reach on these items is over 2,000 views per item. Next, invest in infrastructure. Strategy one is prioritize the capital improvement plan projects to address health and safety while maximizing available funds. An update to the CIP included ARPA funding for projects to be approved with the financial year 23 budget. And strategy three, prepare and update source documents to guide and inform the capital improvement process. We continue to utilize electric power pole condition and water sewer condition assessments to formalize a maintenance plan and prioritize subsequent CIP projects. Next is manage growth and development. On strategy one, identify opportunities for new and small business development that will provide a diverse revenue stream with minimal impact on the quality of life. City staff continues to explore opportunities to attract a second grocery store to the community, and I'm going to get a little bit ahead here, but in the upcoming election, voters will be considering selling a parcel of land for that purpose. Strategy nine, develop a plan to incorporate wayfinding and directional signage in business corridors and along thoroughfares. So the city has contracted with LGA to conduct a wayfinding study that will help the commercial corridor identity, and we're currently seeking public feedback on that, and the plan for the wayfinding signage will be completed by June of this year. Now moving to promotion of historic preservation. Strategy four, amend existing codes to achieve historic preservation goals. The Historic Preservation Ordinance Ad-Hoc Committee met in February and had their final meeting in March. The committee recommendations will be forwarded to the council for your consideration and staff direction regarding next steps. And then strategy eight, identify historic buildings to repurpose and reuse. The city submitted a request to the Commission for Cultural Centers and Historic Preservation asking for a grant of $200,000 for the historic water filtration plant restoration work in February. Final grant awards will be decided during the summer. The next strategy is sustain a high level of public safety services. Strategy two is ensure adequate staffing. The fire department is still seeking funding and support on firefighter initiatives. They're also looking at the SAFER grant, which will start announcing grant awards in May or June of this year. The finance director, fire chief, and myself met recently to discuss some creative solutions about firefighter staffing that I'm looking forward to sharing with you soon. And strategy three, define and disseminate standards to ensure a high level of public safety services. So all police department policies, procedures, and training were reviewed and updated to meet the latest legislative requirements and mandates. And the fire department recently completed the community risk assessment and standard of cover documents. Both have been submitted to the city leadership, and the standard of cover is also available to the public on the department website. The development of their 22 to 26 strategic plan was also completed earlier this month. So as a wrap-up, I encourage everyone to check out the plan, as well as many of the implementation plan updates, at bcnv.org/stratplan. And I stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Councilmember Jorgensen? Yes, I was just looking in under historic preservation, and I saw that one of them, strategy seven, was placed on hold, which was basically to develop an educational campaign about historic artifacts in Boulder City. Do you know why that specific one? It said placed on hold in 2019. So will it be on hold indefinitely, or is that one that we'll be addressing?
Well, we can definitely take a look at that. I know a lot of things were placed on hold for various reasons, but on that one, I'm not sure, but I can definitely find out for you.
Any other questions or comments? I know later, we are going to talk about potential ballot question for some of the public service requests, excuse me, public safety requests. Going back to the infrastructure in general, you know, we have a lot of projects out there right now. Last council meeting was a budget meeting. We talked about the use of some of the American Rescue Plan money. At that time, we talked about it. I don't know that we can stress it enough, that a plan is needed to see these projects get underway. The costs, you know, inflation report came out today, highest since 1981. Obviously, those costs are probably going to continue to go up a little bit here over the next several months. Can you go into a discussion of what you see as far as how we can expedite getting these projects out there, construction management? You know, how do you see this working out over the next year or so?
Sure. So especially on those ARPA projects where we have the deadline to spend the money, it is of the, you know, utmost importance to get those projects done in a timely manner since we do have a deadline. But along with our other CIP projects that we'd like to make sure that we follow through on as well, I believe there's some techniques we can use when crafting the RFPs for these projects to include dedicated project managers that would assist us on their team to make sure that these projects are moving along, to help our staff track these projects closely and make sure that we get the projects done. I also believe that utilizing other unique ways through design-build contracts, things of that nature, we can get the projects finished quickly.
Thank you. You know, I know we have a small staff, and they do a great job, but we have an amount of money here that the time is restricted, and we're going to be competing against certainly other entities that are trying to get their projects done as well. So I'm glad that staff is looking into that. I believe that it's an allowed expense under the rescue plan to employ someone if need be, whether that is a consulting firm or an engineer that may be able to assist in these. But again, I just think that our small staff has a number of projects that are working on already, and we probably need to look outside what we may have, whether it's through the type of procurement we do, or going with somebody in a consulting capacity that can help get the projects underway and completed.
And that's a great point, and we'll continue to look into whatever means necessary that we can utilize to leverage other resources to get these projects done, like a consultant, excuse me, or something like that. And then to touch on your comment on inflation, so our CIP coordinator and our public works department have been working really hard to make sure that all of our cost estimates on projects that are not completed at this time are current, so that we're making sure that we have the proper resources for those projects.
Thank you. And, you know, to point out to the public, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a small staff. We've been faced with a pandemic for the last two years. If we look at the things that have been accomplished by looking at the strategic plan, I think people should know that while the pandemic certainly curtailed a lot of what we were able to do and forced us to respond to other things, staff has kept going on many of these things. Projects have continued to move forward. My compliments to the efforts that they've put into this to keep all of the things on track and moving forward. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Move to item number nine, matters pertaining to ballot questions for the 2022 election. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Item nine before you today is Resolution 7403. This resolution would place a question on the ballot for the 2022 general election, asking registered voters whether clean energy technologies such as battery energy storage, carbon capture, and clean hydrogen, in addition to the two existing natural gas facilities, should be approved uses within the El Dorado Valley transfer area. To provide additional background as to the impetus for the ballot question, essentially, uses in the El Dorado Valley are limited by our city charter. Section 144 of the city charter enumerates certain types of uses that are allowed. It also included existing leases and existing lease options, but it did not include a natural gas specifically. There is a natural gas facility, it is operated, owned and operated by SDG&E. And there's also a proposed natural gas peaker plant that would have to be built by 2028 under its current lease. These are currently grandfathered in, so they are absolutely permitted to be there. However, there is a lease imminently expiring in 2027. So to be proactive, it would be prudent to reach out to the registered voters and get their input on whether this facility and the proposed facility should continue beyond their lease expiration dates. So this question was proposed as a result. I was directed by the city council on February 8th to draft it when SDG&E had reached out to us, and they are also looking at adapting, I would say, adopting new clean energy technologies. And so they asked to work with us on the wording, because those uses would also have to be approved by the voters, and thought this was a great opportunity to get their input on that as well. So with that, we brought back the amended language that would also ask the voters whether these new clean energy technologies should also be approved uses in the El Dorado Valley. The question is drafted, so that if it were approved, as far as the natural gas facilities, those would only, only the existing facilities or the facilities proposed to exist pursuant to existing leases would be allowed. There wouldn't be additional facilities authorized, natural gas facilities authorized by this question. With that, if there are questions about the facility that's out there, or any of the clean energy technologies that are listed here, there are representatives from SDG&E here that can answer that. We have Dwayne Cave and Kevin Landman.
Gentlemen, if you'd like to come up to the podium?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Dwayne Cave, and I'm the Senior Public Affairs Manager for San Diego Gas and Electric, and very happy to be here today to talk about the proposed ballot measure. We are in support of that going forward. We'd like to answer any questions that you may have, but we'd like to say that we really appreciate the longstanding relationship SDG&E has had with the city. We would like to continue that relationship, and we'd like to build and strengthen that in the future, if it be the voters' wishes.
Thank you. And yes, I know that your company has been in this from very early on. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. My question was regarding the hydrogen. I see here clean hydrogen, and I guess I just wanted to make sure we're being clear because in trying to get my best understanding and grasp of it, you know, you see things like blue hydrogen and green hydrogen, and, you know, different ways in which the hydrogen is captured, I guess, and then produced. What is your guys' plan as far as you see for hydrogen production?
At this time, we don't have an approved plan, but there are a lot of emerging technologies, clean emerging technologies, and hydrogen is one of those. So that's one that we want to continue to study and move forward and potentially bring that to the Valley itself.
And then I guess my question would be for the city attorney. You know, depending on how the hydrogen is captured or produced, it can use a lot of energy, and whether or not it's, basically, it's considered green hydrogen when that power that is used to capture is renewable. Otherwise, the amount of power that it can take to, I'm not sure what the right word here, because we're not creating hydrogen, but as far as we're trying to extract it or capture it, so that we're making sure that the projects that are going on down there are using renewable energy and we're not talking about... there are using renewable energy and we're not talking about using massive amounts of could be fossil fuel energy or other types of energy to create something that will in the end have no carbon emissions, but the product of capturing it in and of itself, it kind of negates the whole purpose, so.
Sure, I would just say that these are, I'm not an energy expert, but these are newer technologies that are considered renewable energies, are considered clean energies that are being, that are being reviewed as alternatives to natural gas. The ballot question itself would not authorize the, would not authorize the clean hydrogen use in the El Dorado Valley in and of itself. It would authorize it as a use that could be proposed to the city council. So if it's authorized as a use, there would still have to be a separate proposal and agreement presented explaining exactly what the impact would be to the community, what the, and there would be additional information presented. So, and additional agreements would be entered into to protect the city of any adverse effects and things like that. So this would just say, voters, is this something you would consider to be a use in the El Dorado Valley? And then any, any, any proposal would have to be brought back to the city. They wouldn't be able to do it under their current lease.
Understood. And then I guess what it comes down to is that word clean. I mean, is there actual, a definition? So when voters are going in there and they see clean, they think one thing, but does it actually hold meaning to what we're talking about?
I believe that hydrogen is considered a clean, it's non-fossil fuel, is my understanding, but I'm not an energy expert.
And neither am I, but that's what I'm trying to, I guess, get to here.
And I'll just say, at San Diego Gas and Electric, our tagline is clean, safe, reliable energy. We take clean very, you know, that's extremely important. That's why it's the first thing on our tagline. So it is very important to us, and I'll let Kevin explain a little bit more about clean hydrogen.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Landman. I'm the Plant Manager at Desert Star Energy Center out in the valley, also used to be known as El Dorado Energy for years and years. I've been out there for 23 years. The question regarding hydrogen is clean. The reason it's called clean is because when you burn hydrogen, it emits no greenhouse gas. That's where that definition comes from. Now, how you arrive at the hydrogen, there's a lot of different ways, and the issue that we're dealing with right now is it's a very emergent technology. Things are changing rapidly. In 2008, when we put the first 10 megawatts of solar out there, it seemed very strange to do that, and now look at that whole area. So scale has really increased the viability of that, of that product, and we're hoping SDG&E is looking at hydrogen as a way of making and assisting the energy transition away from natural gas. There's various ways. We could, we could actually generate hydrogen on site in small quantities. More than likely, if we convert the plant to burning hydrogen, it would be via pipeline where we wouldn't actually create the, or separate the hydrogen on site. We would use it as a fuel that would come in. There's a lot of ways, and it's still very, very young right now. We would just like to have this opportunity to look into hydrogen as well as carbon capture, battery, energy storage, all those different methods right now that help with the energy transition for the future.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and of course, I absolutely believe when you guys say that you're here to, you know, advance the technology and provide clean energy. I just want to make sure, because this would approve for, you know, any use for anyone to come in and say, hey, I want to look at this. And so I just want to make sure that what we're really trying to get to here is that we are trying to encourage renewable energy, you know, resources to be used to, you know, because as you said, how you get to extracting that hydrogen or removing it, separating it, that can be very power intensive, and then where that power comes from, you know, that could offset. And again, it's not that I don't doubt what your guys' mission is here, but this ballot question would be open to everybody. So I just, I guess I wanted to have that, put that out there for everybody to consider. I think it's the right way to go as long as we're talking about actual, you know, green hydrogen where we're using renewable energies to power that extraction process.
And I'd like to follow up on that as well. You know, the Colorado River, the federal government has declared a water emergency for the first time in history. Hydrogen comes from water and turns back into water. That's my concern as well, that, you know, rather than this hydrogen being produced elsewhere and piped here, that whether it's your company or another company would say, well, you know what, we will take water from Boulder City and we will break that down to hydrogen and use that as our fuel. Boulder City does have a specific allotment, and the Colorado River obviously is telling us what its allotment is, and right now the news is not good. So how can we foresee that with this definition we have in the ballot question that we're not going to be making our Lake Mead problem larger by approving something like this?
So I definitely understand the question and the issues in front of you here. Besides being with SDG&E, just want to let you know, I'm also an elected official with the water district where I live, and water's a precious commodity. And I know that we cannot waste it. We have to make sure that we're taking, taking really good care of it. If we have to use large quantities to produce hydrogen, that would more than likely, according to our experts, be made somewhere else and piped here. So, but if we do need water, any water uses in the future that we have, that has to go through an environmental process here locally. It has to get permitted here locally, and so it's going to be a public process that allows us to do anything that we do in the future. So with the water use, again, it would have to be, a plan would have to be brought forward, and it would have to be approved by those bodies that regulate it.
All right. And Madam City Attorney, just to confirm, the way this is written, we are talking about only natural gas-fired plants that are either currently in existence or that there is already a lease that may allow for that construction, but no others beyond that?
That is correct.
All right. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you guys for being good, good community partners. Appreciate that. My first response to that issue of the hydrogen would be adding the definer, the adjective of sustainably sourced. So, but that would be the only thing I could think of if we were looking at a source of renewable energy that was also sustainably sourced, that if there had to be water involved, that it was a sustainable source of water as opposed to figuring out a way to use a limited, limited resource. But that, that's one comment. And the other was a question, and what is carbon capture? Because I'm not sure it's what I think it is. So if you could define what the carbon capture?
Would you be good at that or? No.
You don't know. Well, you can't, I mean, I think of it as you reusing carbon emissions for a source of something, energy.
Basically, instead of taking it out of your flue gas stream, which goes back to the environment even after it's been treated in your environmental process, instead of going directly in the environment, it is generally compressed and pumped underground is one way of doing it, or pumped in storage tanks, and then it is filtered, and then you can use that as a product in manufacturing. So it doesn't become a greenhouse gas. It becomes a solid.
Oh, it does. Oh, that's interesting.
Manufacturing. Another, another technology that's still, still in early, early development, but it's a way of still burning a greenhouse gas, like natural gas, but pulling the carbon out of it so that you reduce the greenhouse effect as much as possible.
I'm familiar with using it as a feedstock for algae.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a project I was familiar with that actually used the carbon emissions as a feedstock for algae because they eat all the CO2 and NOx and would produce fertilizer. It's a different topic, but I was just curious what, how that would be used.
Very, very similar technology.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, when looking at this, I just want to make sure that what I'm hearing is correct, that we're just basically asking the community whether or not they want to continue leasing for these purposes, these two parcels, and/or give the option for that.
That's correct.
And then also that it would have to come before us for any of these to ever be approved anyhow. So at that time, we would know more about what you wanted to do and/or if that was something that was in the purview of what we wanted to see happen.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good with this then. Thank you.
And I think it is important to point out that over the years with the language that is in the charter, there's a phrase in there, I believe, that says other governmental activities, but that is clearly related to rights of way. And there may even be some language in there about communications, and that has been misinterpreted before to allow for other things such as a drone port that was too close to our airport, so never got off the ground, so to speak. This, I think, clarifies for our community what uses are permitted down there and helps to reduce that confusion or potential confusion for people to take the wording out of context and say, well, this is justification for that. This much more clearly identifies what are energy-related activities. Any other questions or comments? Gentlemen, I appreciate the information, and again, SDG&E has been a great partner for our city for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we do have a resolution regarding this, whether to proceed to ask the voters for this. Any further discussion on the resolution itself? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7403?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 7403.
Second thought?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Move to item B of this item, Resolution 7439. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Resolution 7439 before you today. I was directed on March 22nd to draft this ballot question, seeking voter approval to spend up to $2 million from the capital improvement fund for improvements to public safety facilities, including without limitation renovation of the existing police station and the construction of a training facility at the fire station. As you may know, Section 142 of the Boulder City Charter directs a certain percent of proceeds from real estate transactions such as solar energy leases into the capital improvement fund. Expenditures from this fund must be voter-approved. There is approximately nine thou, nine, excuse me, 9 million available, and the question before you, as drafted, seeks to appropriate, or I wouldn't say appropriate, but allow the city council to spend up to $2 million from this fund for these purposes. There is also an amendment on the dais that has been proposed by Mayor McManus that would propose to increase the amount to 7 million, and it also proposes to change the renovation of an existing police station to construction of a new police station. That is before you.
Thank you. And an explanation of that amendment or amended language for this, you know, we've talked about this now, I think, over the past three months as far as how best to proceed on this. We know that both the police department and fire department have made requests for improvements to what they have in taking a tour of the police station and looking at potential other options. I believe that we should go ahead with constructing a new police station along with the training facility for the fire department at the fire department location. That certainly is up to city staff to make that final decision, but that seems to be the direction from both the fire and police, that they would be able to share training facilities and other capabilities if they were to construct a new police station out at that location. The amount is an estimate, but appears to be allow for construction of a suitable police department. I know there's been discussions about renovating the existing police department. When we look at that facility, it was constructed in the early 1930s when Boulder City was first being built. There are some real problems with being able to do that because of the way the building was constructed. Certainly, it was not poorly constructed. Matter of fact, it was constructed so well that some of those walls are not going to move very easily because they're poured concrete that's about a foot thick. But that restricts what can be done with that building. There's also been discussion about privately-owned property here in looking at what might be available. Those buildings, obviously, were not constructed for that. The amount of work that would have to go into the renovations and still may not wind up with a facility that would meet all the needs. I believe this is a more future-looking way to go about this, that instead of trying to have the police find some way to make some other solution work, that we go ahead and provide them with a facility that can be designed from the ground up, and that would increase the funding, which is present in the voter-approved capital improvement fund from the $2 million to $7 million, and change that wording from renovation of existing to construction of a new police station. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, this being the first time, I've seen this. I'm curious, well, I haven't heard about a request for a new. I was, I'm familiar with a request for a satellite or secondary fire station, and because of the, the suggestion of the amount of time it takes to get from the current fire station to the furthest outreaches of Boulder City, whereas this only offers the fire department the training facility and yet gives the police a new station, would there be a way to combine the two, to have along with the police, new police department, an auxiliary or a satellite fire station? Because that has been a request, that has been under discussion a number of times, and yet it seems to be overlooked, so to speak, in this request for a new building.
To respond to that, the STANTEC report, I think, made pretty clear that the existing police facility was not adequate for them. There were suggestions in that report of building a new police station. This does not dictate the location of a new police station. It would be up to city staff to make that determination. As far as the new fire department, we've certainly seen some changes in what was proposed from the fire department as far as response times and that type of information. Once again, this doesn't preclude that, but it leaves it up to city staff to come back with a plan if the voters approve this, and that plan, of course, would be subject to city council approval at that time.
And Councilmember, if I might add, so the training facility, that is a request in the CIP. Currently, we had pushed it out to 2024, so this would free up that money for something else. And the police department, you know, they try to make it work, but it is kind of a barrier to operations at times.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. I too toured the police station, and it definitely was not built to house the police station. It had a different use initially, and now we've made this use work. I'm a little concerned about going from 2 million to 7. I think I might agree with you, Claudia, in that if we could kill two birds with one stone, that would be nice. We have a small pot of money, a small community. If we need a different site for the fire station too, maybe we could build a police station in a location that station in a location that would allow them to also be in there and provide the services. In that situation, I would say the 7 might be able to make a little more sense, because I think that depletes then our fund down to 2 million? Yes.
Again, I would just keep in mind that this doesn't dictate where it's to be located. It just says that it would be approved by the voters for construction. Councilmember Adams?
With the Capital Improvement Fund, what do we see, what do we foresee coming into that in the next year?
Project-wise?
Revenue that would be, funding that would be coming in, so we're about to, if we potentially approve 7 million, 7 million gets spent, we have to, what do we, in the future, what do we see, when do we see that money returning back into that Capital Improvement Fund?
It would build up fairly slowly. I can't quote you specific figures on it, but it would, it would take several years to replenish that fund.
I believe the funding source for that is from lease revenue?
Yes.
And it's 20% of the annual lease revenue?
Yes, 20% at a minimum under the city charter, and then the remaining, and 20% to, I believe, it's operational, and then the remaining 60 is split depending on city needs.
And I believe we're at approximately 12 million in lease revenue right now. So we're talking about 2.5 million dollars per year, which would be fewer than three years' worth of revenue to replenish this amount.
Sounds right.
So it's not a long range, it's relatively short-range within less than three years.
Yeah, I guess, and that certainly gives, provides me a little bit more comfort here, seeing how often, you know, we are, you know, approving of these, these funds. I think we've all toured the police station. It is not adequate for the needs of a, of a modern police force. I mean, it's just accessibility is an issue. I mean, just, it does not serve the purpose that it needs to. So again, ultimately, this is going to be up for the voters to decide. This is their money to spend, so I have no issue with going to the voters and asking them if this is where they want to see their money spent.
Other questions or comments?
I still have the question of whether, I don't know what the cost of adding to the police station would be, or whether this was the appropriate venue, but I'm, I do know that this is something under discussion. We talked about the SAFER grant, which would fund additional firefighters for, I believe, three years. Then if this was a million-dollar project in terms of a satellite office or a satellite facility, I don't know how one would put in the wording, or if it would be appropriate to put in the wording, that that could be considered also, or would that have to be a completely different ballot item?
The money could be used for public safety facilities.
And let me just add, so on the fire station, the Finance Director, Fire Chief, and I did recently meet to discuss some other creative solutions, not building a full Fire Department, but more of a satellite-type building that you've kind of referred to. And we are working on putting a plan together so that you can see that, where we could move one unit there, where we wouldn't have to hire new employees to get the response times changed. So we do plan on bringing that to you once the plan's put together. And some kind of satellite Fire Department would most likely be about $3 million. And you could, if you wished, you could use some of the ARPA non-prescribed revenue-loss provision funds for that, if you wished.
So it seems like that's best kept as a separate discussion?
Probably.
At this point?
And you could also look at any money that frees up in the traditional CIP, if you wish to fund a project like that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
I'm just curious how we know that this is the amount it will be, how 7 million. Do we have a proposal somewhere? Do we have a number out there somewhere that we know that if we have this amount, we'll be able to construct a new police station?
We did look up square foot, what it costs per square foot to construct a facility of that nature, so we do believe that that would be achievable.
Any other questions or comments? Again, I think it's important to view this as, you know, as it states here, fund for improvements to public safety facilities, including without limitation to, and then that language. So I believe this does give city staff flexibility in identifying the best use of that for that purpose of public safety facilities without specifically directing, you know, one solution over another. And again, I think it's important to remember, you know, the Capital Improvement Fund, the voter-approved Capital Improvement Fund, I believe the balance currently is $14 million. There, you know, we've just discussed that it's about 2.5 million each year that goes into that. The potential is that 7 million of the existing funds have been approved by the voters for use, constructing a, or repairing our existing municipal pool. That funding may not be needed at all. So when I look at what is in there and what has been approved by the voters already, I would say there's a substantial amount of money in there and being replenished at a rate of 2.5 million per year, it builds relatively quickly. Any other discussion? All right, I will move for approval of Resolution 7439, as amended, to be up to 7 million and include the construction of a new police station. Anyone wishing to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Item Number 10, for possible action, Resolution 7440. Mr. City Manager, is this your item?
This is my item.
Madam City Attorney?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item, Resolution 7440, before you today, would make a determination of the population of Boulder City solely for purposes of the Class A Tavern Liquor License Classification. The Tavern Liquor License Classification allows retail sale of alcoholic liquor for consumption only on premises where sold, not for resale in any form.
Sorry.
Section...
I apologize, it won't stop. Okay, stop. Thank you. I'm sorry, I apologize. No? Okay, nevermind. No? Okay, I won't open it again right now. Apologize.
Excuse me.
I apologize.
Section 425 of the Boulder City Municipal Code provides that there should be one tavern license for each 5,000 persons residing within the city. So the following section then requires the City Council to determine the population for this purpose. The Census estimated our population at 14,885, but the state demographer has estimated it at 15,185, and the governor has also certified our population at 15,185, which would make available three tavern licenses. We currently have two tavern licenses issued, and there is an application pending for a third. If this, if the council determines that there are three available, that would make this application able to be acted upon, essentially, but it wouldn't guarantee any action, simply would allow the license to be available.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding this? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I mean, I guess, I'll just say the obvious. I think everybody was pretty shocked when the census numbers came in, and, you know, it seems that across the country, you know, a lot of places saw a reduction in their numbers that they don't believe were entirely accurate. I don't even know if the 1589 is accurate, but I'm certain it is closer to it than the 14,000 number. Being that that is the official number as certified by the governor, I would think that that would be the appropriate number for us to use, at least here in this, for this particular item.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I apologize for that. I had looked for articles about undercount in the 2020 census. That is, it seemed to be ubiquitous, that many, many communities were dealing with undercounts, having a, what is it, decade annual, is that the word, every 10-year census conducted during a pandemic, when you had little opportunity for the physical counters to go out there and question individual households. I would support going with the governor's number as opposed to the census. Now, I was very surprised, I thought, I used to tell people, we had 16,000 people, and to come in, and under 15 was quite disconcerting, especially because we get funded based on those numbers. We get money back to the state. So again, I apologize, I was, I was trying to recapture the article that I had, I had found about undercounting.
Yeah, the numbers are bad. Everybody agrees the numbers are bad. Could be because of the pandemic, could be for other reasons, but we don't see vacant houses here in Boulder City. We know we've built a couple of hundred houses in the past few years. I have no problem with using the figure from the state, which, again, I'm not sure that came out. Why is this related to the number of tavern licenses?
It is required by the Boulder City Municipal Code. So the Boulder City Municipal Code limits the tavern licenses to be issued, one per 5,000 people, and it requires the City Council to make that determination in order to determine how many licenses are available.
I would much prefer leaving it up to the governor's office rather than any of us going out and counting 15,000 people. You know, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 7440, establishing the population at the number established by the governor's demographer, which will allow for a third tavern license.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Item 11, appoint ballot question committee members. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Before you tonight is appointment of ballot question committee members for two ballot questions. This item will come back to you at the next meeting to consider ballot question committee members for the question you approved tonight. Per NRS 295.217, three persons should be appointed to each committee. However, if that is not an option, then one member can be appointed. One member can also be appointed to two separate ballot questions, they just cannot serve simultaneously on one committee. And if you don't appoint somebody to committee, if there's no volunteers, then the council will direct the city clerk in consultation with the city attorney to write the arguments. And at this time, we have one volunteer, Corinne Mayorga, and she did volunteer for both questions and to write the arguments for on both of them.
Thank you. And again, then if we take action this evening, it would be for the ballot question regarding the potential sale of 16.3 acres?
And the question that you approved tonight, the one that you had already approved but changed tonight for the 7 million from the Capital Improvement Fund for improvements for public safety facilities.
All right, so if we do, well, one, we're not required to make that selection tonight, it could be done at our next meeting?
If that's your wish, yes, we can bring this matter back at the next meeting to appoint to all of the committees at once.
All right, and at the next meeting, we will be reviewing possible appointments for other questions.
Just the one that was approved tonight?
Which is?
For the natural gas.
For the El Dorado Valley. Okay. So we have one person who has volunteered for the affirmative, to be in favor of?
Yes, of both questions.
All right. Personally, I would like to see if we couldn't get some additional people, no reflection on the applicant, appears that the person would be a good choice for that, but give us another opportunity to see if there might be additional people that would like to volunteer for this. Any other thoughts on that?
I, you know, the only, the only concern I would have with that is just sometimes getting these people on board to get ready for this, you know, these things do take time. I'm not really as familiar now with the, how, what the timeline looks like now, because these questions aren't going to be coming up until November, so I'm not sure what the timeline and when these are due to the, to the state.
Actually, I think it's to the county.
Yeah, sorry, to the county.
Word down to the next meeting would be it for appointments. And just so you're aware, we did advertise on our website, our social media sites. I understand there's a neighborhood app that also forwarded our information out there, and it's been in the newspaper.
So I guess I'm at the point where I wouldn't mind holding it to the next week. However, if we're going to hold it to the next week and still there is just one other person, there's just still one person wanting to do it, then, then we've now wasted two weeks and something we could have moved forward with. So I am kind of leaning towards appointing this person, and if there are more individuals who are interested, there will be other questions for them to appoint. I could go either way, I think it might be, just as far as being efficient, might be best to move forward tonight on the two questions, at least that we have before us now.
Madam City Clerk, if we do go ahead with the one appointment, would it be possible, if others were interested, to appoint them to the same questions? Or if we make an appointment this evening, we can only then appoint for the other question, the El Dorado Valley question?
No, you can, you still have the opportunity to do that, and if anybody else does volunteer, if you don't want to direct me to write the arguments tonight, then we still would need somebody against for both questions.
Okay.
So you could appoint tonight, not direct me until the next meeting, and then either select a volunteer if they volunteered, or direct me at that time.
And we can't prevent you from thinking about this for the next two weeks, can we? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I would like to move to accept Corinne Mayorga to write the pro arguments for the two items, leaving the other two open for either an additional volunteer at the next meeting. And lacking that volunteer, having the city clerk write the arguments against. Is that complete?
I'd second that.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to Item 12, public comment. Public comment during this period may be on any subject. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak. No action may be taken. No action may be taken on items that are raised during this public comment period, and as always, we ask people to be civil and concise. Is there anyone who would like to speak in the last public comment period who's present? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in at this time. The number is 702-589-9629. Anyone wishing to call in? Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment?
No emails were received.
Thank you. All right, last chance, anyone present would like to speak? All right, we will close the final public comment period, move to our last item, council reports. Councilmember Bridges?
I have no report.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I just wanted to point out today, I had an opportunity to go deliver meals on whales, and for those of you who don't know what it is, it's through our senior center, they provide meals for elderly who cannot come to the place themselves to get the meals. And they do like drivers that can volunteer and help them, and I know that the mayor also does this, and it's actually a wonderful opportunity, and it makes them really happy when you show up at their door, and it, it's just a great opportunity. If you have the opportunity to serve, I'd encourage you to go check that out.
It's about an hour out of your day, and it's certainly worthwhile. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to share with everybody that the community came out and gathered to commemorate and pay their respects to Sandy Nelson this weekend. It was a lot of fun, as, well, it might sound odd to say, for a celebration and a memorial for life, but I don't think Sandy wouldn't have had it any other way. I think there were even a few moments where he was maybe perhaps laughing at us all, as he was one to do. So it was a really great time, and looked like the rest of the city was, was out having a wonderful evening as well, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I was at a convention and visitors authority meeting this morning. The numbers that we continue to see being reported by the hotels, casinos are positive. In some cases, they reflect what we've seen here in Boulder City, that portions, at least of last year, revenue for some businesses was actually higher than what it was prior to the pandemic. That's great news. They're announcing new shows coming into the convention center, bringing in tens of thousands of visitors for these shows. It's a real testament to what Vegas has been able to do in getting things turned around pretty quickly. An event that's coming up soon is the NFL Draft. They have a fantastic setup for that that will be coming very soon, next couple of weeks, I believe. You can download an app on your phone, get into the event for free, watch a whole bunch of different exhibits that are going on down there. They will be blocking off the Las Vegas Strip, a portion of it, for this. They're going to set up a stage out on the Bellagio Fountains. At least the video looks really good. I think the rest of it will be great, too. And as always, you know, one way we can keep this recovery going, if you've not been vaccinated, please talk to a healthcare professional about the benefits of this. There are a couple of spots around the country that are seeing infections go up again. Fortunately, they don't appear to be as severe as what we've experienced in the past, but whatever we can do to keep the coronavirus out of our lives, we're all much better off of that. Thank you, and we are adjourned.